Represent your people. I'd like to ask my brother, Talley Redcorn, to counsel if you could do an opening prayer for us. Please rise. Lord God, we pray for our new council, number five. We congratulate you, each and every family member here of the act that's been selected. And we thank you for this gift that you give us, and we ask that you give us a good heart, a good mind, and we might take care of business as you seek it. We'll take care of our children, our grandchildren. Continue to flourish and provide for our people. We thank you for all that you do. We pray for peace in all, in all, in all the world here at home and then abroad. Please be seated. Thank you. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Judge Holber. We're going to take our oaths at the front here. Brother Eric, can you step back?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Reverend Paul Reed.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
The Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people and Wakonta.
Flow from the Osage people and Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest of all Osages.
Always to place the best interest of all Osages.
Above any special or personal interests.
Above any special or personal.
And to respect the right of future generations.
And respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich historic and natural heritage.
To share the rich historic and natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
Always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a great honor. I love you guys.
Let me give you this too. It's a gift from the court.
Way we know. Thank you, dear.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
I, Reverend Anthony Reddick.
Do proudly swear.
Proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
The Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
The powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people and Wakonta.
Flow from the Osage people and Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest of all Osages.
Place the interest of all Osages.
Above any special or personal interests.
Any special or personal interests.
And to respect the right of future generations.
Respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich historic and natural heritage.
Share the rich historic and natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
Always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Let me give you a constitution. I.
I.
State your name.
Talley Redcorn.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
The Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest.
Always to place the interest.
Of all Osages.
Of all Osages.
Above any special.
Above any special.
Or personal interests.
Or personal interests.
And to respect the right.
And to respect the right.
Of future generations.
Of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
And natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
I will always uphold and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Osage Nation.
Of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. I.
I.
State your name.
Melissa Curry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest.
Always to place the interest.
Of all Osages.
Of all Osages.
Above any special.
Above any special.
Or personal interests.
Or personal interests.
And to respect the right.
And to respect the right.
Of future generations.
Of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
And natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
I will always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. I.
I.
State your name.
Anthony Shackleford.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
The Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
The powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest.
Always to place the interest.
Of all Osages.
Of all Osages.
Above any special.
Above any special.
Or personal interests.
Personal interests.
And to respect.
And to respect.
The right of future generations.
The right of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
And natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
Always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I.
I.
State your name.
Paul Reedard.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
Of the Office of the Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest of all Osages.
Always to place the interest of all Osages.
Above any special. Or personal interests.
Above any special or personal interests.
And to respect the right of future generations.
And to respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
And natural heritage.
Of our Osage people. In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
I will always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
I.
I.
State your name.
Joseph Blackbird Tishawala Nahana.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest.
Always to place the interest.
Of all Osages.
Of all Osages.
Above any special.
Above any special.
Or personal interests.
Or personal interests.
And to respect the right of future generations.
And to respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
Natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold and defend.
I will always uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll give you one of these.
A gift.
I.
I.
State your name.
Kenneth Big Horse Jr.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the office.
Carry out the office.
Excuse me. I'm the judge on this one. Let me start over, okay? I, state your name.
Kenneth Big Horse Jr.
Do proudly swear.
Do proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibilities.
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
Of the Office of Minerals Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the Osage people.
Flow from the Osage people.
And Wakonta.
And Wakonta.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the interest.
Always place the interest.
Of the Osage people.
Of the Osage people.
Above any special.
Above any special.
Or personal interests.
Or personal interests.
And to respect the right.
And to respect the right.
Of future generations.
Of future generations.
To share the rich historic.
To share the rich historic.
And natural heritage.
And natural heritage.
Of our Osage people.
Of our Osage people.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
The Constitution of the Osage Nation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
You want a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Big Horse.
Here.
Councilwoman Curry.
Present.
Councilwoman Tishawala.
Present.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Here.
Second Chair Reddick.
Here.
Councilwoman Reedard.
Present.
Councilwoman Shackleford.
Here.
Chairman Waller.
Present.
We have a forum.
And thank you. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion on election of chair. Yes, Councilwoman Reddick. I'd like to nominate Chairman Waller. I will need a second on that.
I'll second.
Yes. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Redcorn, seconded by Councilwoman Curry. Any discussion? Very none. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Big Horse.
Question? No.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Reddick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reedard.
No.
Councilwoman Shackleford.
No.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your support. We would like to talk about the next agenda item, election of second chair. We could entertain any motion. Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Tishawala.
I'll second that. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shackleford, seconded by Chairman Waller. Any other discussion?
I didn't hear the question for the motion.
For Joseph Tishawala to obtain second chair.
Thank you.
Yes. Can't be talking when we're talking. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Reddick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reedard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shackleford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Big Horse.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you. Uh, the other is the. The signatory. Can I go ahead and make the motion myself to request options on adding signatories? Am I allowed to reach out to my council now and ask them if they could take the position? Gentlemen, I'd like to turn to you, Mr. Tishawala and Mr. Shackleford, if you would help us with being our signature authorities for the Osage Minerals Council. And that's my motion. I will need a second.
A second, sir.
Second, Reverend Paul Reedard. Motion made by Chairman Waller, seconded by Councilwoman Big Horse. Any other discussion? Yes.
Can we get one more?
Well, sure, you can. Oh, we're not keeping none of the old ones. That's correct. I am so sorry, second chair. I'd like to add second chair to the signature authority. In this motion. Are you okay with that, Councilwoman Big Horse? Is that correctly done? Now call for the question.
Councilwoman, Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reddick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reedard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shackleford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Big Horse.
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. And I have a second. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Redcorn, seconded by Councilwoman Tishawala. No discussion. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Reddick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Reedard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shackleford.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Big Horse.
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry.
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're done with your first meeting. Thank you very much. With that, I want everybody to relax. Lacy, would you tell us the.
Group pictures and individual pictures with you and your families are.
Are we gonna do that here?
In front of the seal or if you guys prefer.
What do you guys want? Right here. Go ahead, bear with us. We'll sit down and cheers up. I'd like to use that seal that's been used by, uh, I want to compliment some other things. I sit on councils with your fathers. And let's stick with. Let's sit down and do a council picture first. And then we'll put our families with us real quick. And once we get done with that.
Hey, there's the judge.
How are you? Yes, when we put our main council over here, it's handy.
Oh, did you get COVID-19?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. You had a castle roof. I know that. Oh, you're in charge now.
Marvin, do you have a picture of your robe?
Do I have to know what?
Do you have a picture of your robe?
Yeah, I did. I'm in it, but I've got a very good.
Yeah. I just wondered, you don't have it on your phone?
Well, I did have it.
Damn, I have to go back. You know what year it was?
Well, thank you, dear.
Back by twenty twenty right now.
Yeah.
It's twenty eighteen.
Today's, you want one? I don't think I do.
Twenty eighteen was about four years ago.
Yep.
Let's go. Twenty, let's go twenty eighteen. No, that's five years ago.
Yeah, I changed phones. I lost a lot of pictures. I've got a picture of me as a grumpy old man. Thank you. In order of your oath, bring your family here, do a family photo, and then we'll get out to you. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna go get my. And then we.
That's something that you just gotta work around doing yet.
Go ahead, picture.
How much you can charge and let us know. Yeah, I'm really, it's tight up here. Yeah, I tell you. I ever get in trouble. I tried a snack, guess you're not gonna call. Those must be right.
I had it in front of me. Four twenty-five years. I'm gonna send her and have my daughter.
Twenty twelve.
You know, I want to put grandma up front to show that position.
Are you okay with that? Okay, he's stowed it first and then like that. Get a couple of stow again. Five terms, baby. I know, it's a long job. You wouldn't be happy to get changed for it. I would like to just have that. I guess I'd be coughing up. Marvin.
Oh, really? Yeah.
How's your chicken?
Restock.
Yeah. You got a couple of birds and bread and chicken.
You don't have any heart problems with them dogs. They tear up too.
Hey, that's raccoon's gills, the theme app.
Yes.
Yeah. They do learn and they know what to do. Operational going, oh, man. And, and then drag them.
Chill off.
Yeah. And then eat the head. That's a weak. Yeah, I told you to redo. Then the flies and the, I think the buzzer finally got it. Then some got, some. Oh, stand up, okay.